You Ashante.
I'm exhausted. Finally crashed after all the graduation celebrations and excitement, so. It's back to business as usual.
Yeah.
I know.
Hey Ziva, do we have a forum? I don't think we do. Or do we?
Hello, just FYI, we are now live on YouTube. Let's check. Almost, not quite.
Okay.
Hey Jennifer, if you're ready, I think you can go ahead and bring us to order. We have four members here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were still waiting. All right, I will call us to order. It's almost Charter School Board of Directors meeting, June 14th, 2021. 5:33 PM. All right, I'll take role. Karen Harding Davis. Sean King. Gina Lee.
I'm here.
Dr. Mejorado.
Hi, here, present.
Hi there. Preety. Jennifer Morgan, I'm here. Ashante.
Here.
Jonathan Core.
Here.
Hi John. Gavin.
Here.
Awesome. Thanks guys for coming on the first day of summer. Max.
Here.
Ollie. Here. All right. Excellent. Okay, so. Hearing of the public for items on our closed session agenda. Any comments? Okay, at this time we'll adjourn to closed session to consider and/or take action upon any of the following. Number one, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code 54956.8. Our administrative representatives will be Dr. Wood and Anita Schwab and our agency negotiator is Charlie Leo. Property is APN225-dash-0060-dash-021-dash-0000 located at Del Paso Road in Sacramento, California. And our discussion is based around potential purchase terms and process. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session.
Members of the public, can everybody hear me okay? Thumbs up? Awesome. They are just wrapping up closed session right now. They're running just a few minutes late, but they are wrapping up and will be on in just a moment. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience.
Members of the public, can everybody hear me okay? Thumbs up, awesome. They are just wrapping up closed session right now, they're running just a few minutes late, but they are wrapping up and will be on in just a moment. Thank you for your patience. David, do we have everybody back? Not quite, okay.
And Ms. Morgan, I understand that Karen Harding Davis joined during closed session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll have the record reflect that she did was not present during the initial roll call, but she was for closed session.
Correct, thank you.
Mr. King joined us as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Preeti is not here, is what I have in my notes, is that correct?
Correct. We do have a quorum, we don't quite have everybody though.
Okay, I can give it just one more minute.
Sure.
Thank you.
Looks like we might just be waiting for Karen.
Okay. So everybody want to just go ahead, she may have connection issues.
We're going to get started, Jen, so if you want to reconvene us.
Yes, let's reconvene to open session 6:24 PM and no action taken in our closed session. Moving on, section F, recognitions and celebrations, Joe.
Yeah, so we wanted to, you know, this is our second to last board meeting of the year and we wanted to kick it off with something fun, which is really recognizing and celebrating three parents that have been amazing this year. So you know, in the Thomas Charter School, we are fortunate that we have amazing parents as a whole, but these three individuals really went above and beyond this year. And so I'm actually going to introduce them in the order that they're showing up on my screen. So first, we have Wendy Rayhill, Wendy, if you can say hi and wave your hand so you show up for everyone. So hopefully everyone can see Wendy, Wendy is a Star Academy and PFA parent. And then we have Shay Collier, Shay, if you can say hello and wave your hand. And Shay is currently a Star Academy parent, previously also a leading edge parent. And then we have Rachel Farrell, Rachel, if you can say hi and wave. Rachel is currently a Star Academy parent and a leading edge parent. And so tonight, we wanted to recognize these three individuals because we have had close to 20 vaccination clinics that we have been a part of here in the Thomas community. And these three parents have been at every single vaccination clinic between the three of them. And they have been, they've definitely been Ziba's backbone in terms of making everything happen. And you know, they've really helped to dispense 30,000 vaccinations here in the Thomas community, which meant that every single 12-year-old and older person in our community, whether it was a teacher, a staff member, a parent, a student, has been able to be fully vaccinated thanks to their efforts and their volunteerism and their just, you know, tireless time, walking the pavement, printing stickers that say, you know, I got vaccinated, the whole nine yards, they've literally done everything. So each of them have a little, is it a bag, Ziba, is that what they have with them? Each of them have a little bag, and so do you guys have your bags nearby? If you do, I see Rachel's got hers, Wendy's got hers. All right, and I think Shay has hers, so go ahead and open your bags. And so inside of their bags, they have a little recognition, just a small token of our appreciation as a board and a school community for all of their work. So they have a little plaque that they've received. Just, you know, simply our way to say thank you for everything that you've done this year, we literally could not have done it without you. All three of these individuals are also on my executive director parent advisory committee. And they've been instrumental in helping us figure out, you know, how do we reopen, how do we best support teachers, how do we best support kids? So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you all very much for your help. Moving on to student reports. I know that all three of our student representatives are here on the first day of summer, so thank you very, very much. I won't even tell you to go home and do your homework when we're done. Gavin, would you like to kick it off for us, please?
Of course, so, well, not as the new year approaches, so since the end of the year, VLA has planned a few events such as on May 27th, we hosted POG, POG, which was party to the grades, where we had different events, where we had our cap decorating party for the seniors, where we also hosted games for everyone else, like real, like real-life battleship, scavenger hunt, link murder mystery. And everyone seemed to have a great day at POG, just because we were finally like in person, able to talk and everything. And honestly, from my experience, it was a great time seeing, like talking to the underclassmen, getting to know them. And it was overall a great time. And then after that, once our lunch was over, the seniors were able to present their senior showcase, there were, their presentations were awesome, and they've been working on it all year long. And to wrap up the event, we had the popsicles, and then that's when the seniors decorated their caps. VLA also had their finals to wrap up the year. And also, on June 2nd, the seniors had a little a practice graduation to ensure like all the seniors would know what they're doing, so there wasn't any confusion at the graduation. And the seniors graduated on June 7th. And afterward, on June 9th, the seniors were able to have a nice little dinner party hosted by the staff. And overall, VLA has had a great year, even with the problems of digital learning, and everyone worked their hardest, and VLA has accomplished incredible feats. Thank you.
All right, I just wanted to add as well, congratulations to Gavin, who graduated and has been our board representative for two straight years from BLA, so great job Gavin.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations Gavin. Moving on, Max.
There was, our last spirit week was from May 24th to May 27th, and many students and staff participated. It was good seeing people have spirit. And finals and projects have wrapped up and all work has been completed for the year. And eighth grade promotion was on June 7th, at Sutter Health Park with PFA and PACT, and with the celebration of all three grades completing middle school. And leading edges, eighth grade brunch in celebration of completing middle school was on June 11th, and it was good to see everybody one last time before we go off to high school and complete it this year.
All right, thank you Max, Ollie.
Although the month of June itself wasn't, you know, really long, because it marked the end, the end of the school year, we did have some events like graduation, prom, senior breakfast, and grad night and all that kind of stuff. You know, but I think it's pretty important to look back and acknowledge everything else that's happened to lead us to where we leave off now. And starting this year, I know that everyone in my class and my grade and my school were all, you know, extremely confused just about what the school year would look like, and if it was going to be something that can make us feel like we're going to school, you know, normally. And are we going to have all, you know, these school events that make PFA, PFA? And at the beginning, I didn't have an answer, you know, it was something that was completely new to everyone. But as the months went by, I think little by little, we started to have these moments throughout the school year, whether it was our at-home performances or the virtual ASB Spirit Days, that kind of brought back that little sense of normal back. And then, of course, we started to bring students back to school full-time. And I think that was when we had so many more opportunities to give them more fun and impactful, to give them a fun and impactful rest of the year. And I think that that's what happened, you know, towards the end of school in this last bit at PFA. We had the opportunity of having some great events, some spirit days, performances, we had an ASB picnic. Clubs were able to, you know, hold events and sell sort of stuff and make some progress towards next year's clubs. And I think, you know, the most exciting part was prom, we were able to, you know, still have a prom given these times and graduation and all that kind of fun stuff. And then when you compare that to how everyone felt at the beginning of the year, and that uncertainty, and you know, compared to what we feel coming out of this school year, I would say that, you know, PFA has definitely been on a crazy ride, for lack of a better term, but that's sort of my overall update thingy.
Thank you, Ollie. Are all three of you graduating, or did you graduate?
No, I'm going to be going into my senior year, which is really, really weird to think about.
Okay, I'm sure it's weird for your parents too. So thank you guys for your reports, thank you for attending tonight and for, in Gavin's case, the previous two years and Max and Ollie for this year. You are more than welcome to stay and listen to the exciting stuff that we will discuss. Otherwise, you are free to go, thank you very much. Gavin, if you want to come be, you know, a participant in next year's board meetings, you're more than welcome. If you miss us too much. Otherwise, go enjoy your summer, thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you very much for having me for these past two years, it was great to get to know you guys and see of you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye Gavin.
Bye. All right, since we've sent them off, let's have a hearing of the public for items not on the agenda, Ziba.
Nothing received as of the form.
Thank you. Hearing of the public for items on the agenda.
Also, nothing received.
Okay. Let's move on to approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any changes? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I'll move.
I'll second, this is Maria.
Thanks Maria, thank you Ashante. Okay, now we have a group of consent items. Oh, Ms. Morgan, we need to do a roll call vote, oh, thank you very much, I'm in summer mode already, roll call vote. Sean King. Gina.
Here.
Maria.
Yes.
Preeti's absent. Jennifer, I'm a yes, Ashante.
Yes.
Okay, and just to double check, Karen is not on the call, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry Karen, can I have your vote, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it, thank you very much. Consent items, approve our personnel changes, our May 10th and May 25th board meeting minutes. Approve the salary schedules and approve the job description revisions, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion, I'll move.
Is that Gina?
That is.
Perfect, and may I have a second?
A second.
Uh-oh, I'm going to give it to Sean. All right, let's see, roll call vote again, Karen.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes.
Dr. Mejado. You're muted Maria.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Preeti is absent, Jennifer, I'm a yes, Ashante.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. Action items. Our declaration of need for fully qualified teachers, Dr. Wood.
Yes, so our first action item on the evening is our annual approval of declaration of need for fully qualified educators. As a charter school, as a result of AB 1505, we now are moving towards complying with credentialing requirements similar to a school district. And so Natomas Unified, as our authorizer, is the one who evaluates our credentials, and they recommend that we have this approved by the board every year. This gives us a little bit of flexibility in the event that we cannot find a fully qualified individual for some of our tough-to-hire positions. Specifically, this year, we're identifying, it's called a CLAD certification, but basically it's a certification to support English learners. Anyone that we hire from out of state does not have this yet, so we actually have to, whenever we hire someone from out of state, we have to file for one of these. Special education, our ed specialists continue to be tough to fill positions. Science and math is always are tough to fill along with world language. So by approving this declaration, it just gives the school flexibility that in the event that we cannot find someone who's fully qualified, in the sense that they have a completed credential, we can move forward with an intern teacher or someone who's in the process of getting into an intern program.
Great. May I have a motion to approve our declaration of need for fully qualified teachers?
I so moved, this is Maria.
Thank you Maria, may I have a second?
I'll second, Karen.
Thank you Karen. Okay, roll call vote, Ashante.
Yes.
Jennifer, I'm a yes, Dr. Mejado.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Karen Harding Davis.
Yes.
Okay. Retirement of fixed assets, Anita.
You're muted Anita, just apply.
Sorry, I'm all talking away, getting mean, this is our annual board item to officially remove from our inventory some old obsolete damaged equipment. The IT staff has done a great job in collecting all of these items. As of last week, we have not picked an actual date for e-waste to come and pick them up, but they do have them in a secured location, there's about 134 items on the list that we are currently asking you to approve to remove from our inventory.
Great. May I have a motion to approve the retirement of fixed assets?
So moved.
Thank you Karen, seconds?
I'll second.
Second.
I heard Ashante, okay, roll call votes. Ashante. Yes. Jennifer, I'm a yes. Maria.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
And Karen.
Yes.
Okay. Those fixed assets are retired. And now we can move on to our public hearing for LCAP. We will now open the public hearing for the 2124 Local Control and Accountability Plan at 6:39 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to make a public comment regarding the LCAP? Okay, I'm not hearing any one from the public. The public hearing for the 202124 Local Cont- Controlling The public hearing for the twenty twenty one twenty four local co- control and accountability plan is now closed as of six thirty nine PM. Okay. Uh moving on, section N on our agenda tonight, Laura Beryl, twenty twenty one twenty four local control and accountability plan, our LCAP.
All right, hello, everyone. I've given you some previews of the LCAP before, but now we've got like the whole final beautiful thing. I'm ready to share with you, so let me share my screen. Okay, it looks like you can see it. There we go. All right. Jennifer, can you see it full screen there?
I can, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. All right, um so here we are, we're um looking at our local control and accountability plan. We are going to. Wait, there we go, so just a reminder that the local control and accountability plan is a plan that. Um schools are have to put in place to ensure that they're reaching their strategic goals and that they're really involving all of the stakeholders. Um in the process and that it is data driven. Um and so this one that we're doing is for the next three years. Um setting our goals based off of our data. Um so there's um a variety of things from the LCFF budget overview for parents. Um I'll be talking about the annual update, so looking at the twenty nineteen. Um twenty twenty um LCAP that we wrote. Um we'll have a summary talking about this, the feedback that we got from stakeholders in our process. Um going into, you know, what are our goals and how. Uh one of the main focus areas of the LCAP is li- really looking at. How we're increasing or improving services for um students like foster youth, English learners, low income students. Um and then um as we're setting those goals and actions, we align that with some um monetary funds, so it. It's how are we spending our money to ensure that we're giving equitable education to all the students. Um one thing to think about as we are um working on these plans, they are tied to the budget, so they um do run. From June to to June or July to June. Um but really, when we're looking at the data that drives the LCAP. Um we, we don't have it all in June, so for example, I'm still waiting on uh, you know. Our CASP scores um from this year, I'm still waiting on the LCAP um scores. Um so we have kind of half of the the data right now. Um but then we'll be as that data comes in, we're supposed to have um the state testing da- data, they say June twenty fourth. So excited, I hope it comes out right then, um but then we'll um. Will, you know, be updating the uh data sheets I shared with the uh board members. Um and then we'll probably do an update to uh at a board meeting in October or November. Um because some of the data comes in as we progress, so just to kind of give you guys an idea with that. Um so reflecting on the last um two uh years, so twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. Um the annual update is one of the sections that we'll be looking at. Um first off is looking at our California school dashboard, looking at what are called local indicators, and so these are things that are not. Based on state data, but really looking at how are we working within our local context and as you can see, we. Um the last time we had this as a part of the um dashboard. Um was in twenty nineteen and we were able to meet all of those different um things. So for example, the access to a broad course of study, all of our students have access to A three G through G courses. To help them be college ready. Oh, there we go, okay, so um the way that we set up the um. The LCAP is really looking at what are our strategic goals and so. At Natomas Charter School, we align those with our WASC goals and our LCAP so that we're always moving in one direction because that's the best way. Uh to move an organization, so our first goal is reimagine and strengthening. Um teaching and instruction and so really what we're looking at here is how are we working with the staff to make sure that. Um they are um giving authentic teaching and learning opportunities, looking at how we're assessing students, how are we. Uh collaborating as a team to ensure that we're supporting the students in the most beneficial way. Um and then um how are we communicating and collaborating with those outside of our school so that we're not just an island? Um and so this is looking at the last LCAP that we um set up and so. Um I've got kind of some arrows here, um we overspent in in our instructional resources. Um because we had some new instructional things that we weren't planning on for this last year. Um such as, you know, uh we uh put money towards uh, for example, the iReady instructions. So the online instruction so that students can have those those gaps filled while they were at home. Um also, we got some extra tech tools that the teachers could use like Perdeck or something to um. To help them with the uh distance learning, um so we overspent um by about thirty thousand there. But we also underspent about twenty thousand in field trip funds and different exciting events that got canceled. Um so um in the end, we're off by about um ten thousand, but um we're very. Um I I think happy with our investment in those instructional resources um for our students. Um goal two was around developing a cohesive culture of innovation and accountability. Um and in this, um we're really looking at um how are we supporting those individual students? Um and helping them to get to their success and a lot of this comes through um professional development for staff. Um supporting student leaders, that type of thing, so that we're really getting the learning and the uh developmental and behavioral um outcomes. That we want for our students. Um and so we underspent about twenty five thousand here. Um some was due to professional development, things being canceled. Um so they canceled them outright and then a lot of the uh professional development was free. Over this last year, which was great, it was kind of a deluge of professional development opportunities that were free, which is great. Um and then um we also had um some leadership opportunities, for example, our um link crew students or our high school mentors. Um will usually go to a uh leadership camp. Um but there was no leadership camp to attend, so um we underspent a little bit there because of. You know, a kind of a interesting year that upset our planning. Um looking at goal three, our expanded organizational capacity. Um this is where we're really looking at, you know, how are we setting ourselves up as an organization? To be able to have the resources available to channel towards our students and the changing student needs. Um being ready, you know, with facilities, so for example, you know, making sure that we have the best air system. Um for dealing with whether it's wildfires or COVID or or different things um in that area and so. Um in this area, we did end up overspending by um five thousand for variety of uh facilities needs. Um that came up that we were not um expecting. Um all right, and so because we're looking at the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. Um you know, that brings us back to looking at our CASP data, which was last from twenty nineteen. Um and kind of going back to that more traditional dashboard that we haven't had. Um and looking at it and so looking at our English Language Arts CASP data. Um we had um a schoolwide, we maintained level green, which you, if you remember, it goes red. Orange, yellow, green, blue, um blue being the top, um and so we maintained there, um we had some growth. Um in some of our subgroups, um so for example, our African American subgroup moved from yellow to green, so they went up. Um which was really great, um we had um Asian and Filipino student groups that just maintained in the blue. Um which is the highest level, um so that's good to maintain there. There's nowhere, nowhere to go for up there and then our groups of Hispanic, Torma races and white subgroups maintained in the green. So um so that was, you know, that was some good news there, some challenges we had. Um and these are what has been formulating our plans is that we found um a drop. In um different groups from our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, our English learners and our students with disabilities. And really, that drop um has um. Has led to more um English learner support and then as well as um. Being benefited by us starting our own special education program, um so they have fueled the decisions that we've made. Okay, um looking at math, um our uh from our CASP in twenty nineteen. Um we maintained um yellow level um schoolwide, which um is not. It's not fabulous, it's not where we want to be, um but we we were maintaining. Um we did have some subgroups that um were holding steady or moving, um our Asian subgroup moved from green to blue. Um and then we had some um subgroups that were maintaining um in their, in their color groups. We'd rather see maintaining than dropping, but. We want to see it going up, um and so this is why we um. As we were setting up for the twenty twenty um school year, we were putting a big emphasis on math. Um as a focus area, um because we also saw um. Saw some drops um in our Hispanic groups, our English learners and our students with um disabilities. Um and so that's why um last year we had um adopted the uh CPM, the College Preparatory Mathematics Curriculum. For um for middle school's uh math students and um implemented Ready Classroom at um Star Academy. And of course, working with our sped de- department to develop our own um versus um utilizing the Natomas Unified. So we can really um tailor it to our needs. Um and then um if we look at our um our COVID analysis plan. Um you know, we had lots of successes during um COVID, I feel like we. Worked really hard to ensure that we are maintaining the level of education for our students. That our teachers had a lot of professional development on online learning strategies and hybrid learning. Um one of the things I'm most proud of is that from the very start, we were providing a full day of instruction. Um for our students, which is not something that um was happening everywhere. Um and um we were able to continue with um to refine our MTSS process. Um and um and really ensure that we're putting to putting in the social emotional and intervention supports. And we had everyone on staff working on that, um you know, we had our um campus monitors that were hosting lunches. You know, so that they could connect with the kids and keep those relationships going. Um and of course, our s- uh special education department was leading the way during COVID as far as online services and meetings and. And everything, so um I feel like we did great, we got our kids back to campus. Um I work with a lot of groups outside of um the Sacramento area and many of them are not getting their kids back. Or they just got them back last week of school, so I was feeling really good about that and of course, our performances and events and prom, we had prom last Friday. Um so we had some challenges with COVID and distance learning and student motivation. Um it was, this last year was not easy on anyone and certainly not our students. Um so trying to work with them and and um you know, maintain that community feel when everyone is in their o- own space. Um so we had some, some challenges in this year. Um which then brings us to uh looking at like how, how were the students doing this year and so. Um I gave you kind of a preview and this is the finalized data of our iReady, which is um grades K through eighth grade. Um and so what you'll see here is that the uh maroon color is where the kids came in at the beginning of the year for their reading. Um skills per grade level and or not, sorry, this isn't grade level, this is what um. I had someone ask me about last time and looking at our subgroups. Um and then how much growth they made by the end of the year. Um so for example, if we were to look at our English learners, they were coming in at thirty three percent, we're at or above grade level. And then we bumped it up to forty four percent, um so I was happy to see that we definitely um had growth. Um in all of the areas, which I think at the beginning of the year, but the worry was that we were gonna have uh drops and and gaps. Um so we were making lots of um progress, um definitely. Um the standout is the Latinx uh group that went from thirty two percent at or above grade level to sixty two percent. So that's pretty um pretty significant jumps there, so um. It's good to see that the the kids are moving and really remembering that. Uh these are the kids that are at or above grade level and we had some very significant progress in the students that were two or more grade levels below. Um and some of them still didn't make it to the grade level. Uh at or above grade level, but they made huge progress as they were moving up and when you have a student who is two or more. Grade levels below, it usually takes them a couple of years to make that progress. Um because you're really looking at probably two grade levels is the max you're going to make it um in one year. Um so that um so they're making progress, they're getting closer, I was just going through some more data today and um. And they're getting so close, some of them are like now one grade level below and it's like, oh, we can do this next year, so. Um so that's um. Good news. Um if we look at the um the. I ready data for math, um same um setup here, of course, the numbers are all lower because we know that math is our area. Um that we need to work on and is a a more troubling area across the state. Um but if you look, we have some groups that were um making some really great progress. Um in the middle, you have the it's SED, so it's socioeconomically disadvantaged students um made almost doubled. Uh the number of students um that were at or above grade level, which I thought was really great. I think part of that is giving everyone access to the materials and um technology so that they can work to develop that. Um and so we saw some good progress, we didn't have any groups that were showing dips or um or drops there. Um and then for the LCAP, actually, once I get the CASP data, because CASP was what we used for our juniors. Um I'll be adding that data into this and then updating you in the fall with a big picture. Of all of the the data that we have for at the end of the year for both English and and math. Um so that brings us to planning for the future, so our LCAP for the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. Um where we're um continuing down the road with our WASC planning and um using all of that data and information to move forward. Um so as I spoke about before, we've had a lot of uh. Stakeholder feedback as we've gone throughout the year from surveys to parent meetings, we had um held. I think five different meetings, um specifically about the LCAP. Um and then um through the um ELAC group, the um. The executive director, parent group, um I had one for site-based students, one for non-site-based stu- um or families. Um and so we came up with some, some um trends here and so looking at what are the stakeholders asking for. They're asking for continuing to focus on the math. Um and supporting students in that way. Supporting students in the mental health. Um and then um you know, really helping them get to the post-secondary successes and looking at different ways of doing that. Um which we made some um serious progress this last year. Um with the um dual enrollment from our program with American River College and so I think that's. I on everyone's mind, they're excited about that. Um we definitely, you know, are concerned about looking at how do we re um reengage the students next fall and ensure that they're coming in. Onto campus, ready to go and continuing to develop our communic- or our community because we still do have thirty percent of our students. That have not come back to campus, um I just saw a young gentleman uh today that hasn't been back in over a year. Um and he came to summer school and it was just so wonderful to see him. In person and not on a screen and so just getting them re-engaged in the process and you know, it's it's a little awkward. He was like, I haven't had to pack a lunch and. It's so long and get myself up and ready. Um so uh you know, so we're, we're definitely working on that and then making sure that we're focusing on our diverse group of students. Um and ensuring that we're meeting their needs, so you know, that was some really great um. Feedback that we got from our stakeholders and I think that's a really important part of the equation. Um so looking at the data that we had, um and then the feedback that we got in the process, these are our focus. Areas that we're really looking at is, you know, like I was talking, helping the students reconnect to peers in in-person learning. Uh making sure that we're focusing on the math, which um this next year we actually are going to have our math tosa. So excited um to work with the students and the math teachers and really um bump up our um our focus on the math. Um we're gonna, of course, continue with like English Language Arts, um focusing on subgroups, making sure that we are. Uh meeting the needs of all those students, um mental health uh needs, I think are the forefront. Mental health, uh, needs, I think are the forefront, um, across the board, um, for helping students. Um, and absolutely, you know, ensuring that we are, um, bit continuing to build our special education program. Um, which has just, I think, been getting more and more amazing, um, every month. Um, but really putting some, um, money into making sure that we have enough supports for our students so that they can make, um, some really good progress. Um, and then, of course, um, supporting our students, um, in remediating any, um, Ds or Fs. To ensure that they're on track for, um, A through G, um, eligibility in, um. For going to, um, college. Um, so because we did see, as we had spoken about in the past, more, um, Ds and Fs. Um, in high school. And so we had about eighty students on campus this morning. I don't know if they were raring to go for summer school, but they were there and they came and they jumped in and got started. So. Um, so that was great, great to see them. Um, so that, um, that then takes us to the, um, goal one, um, looking at what is our planning. Um, and which is reimagine and strengthen teaching instruction. So we're really looking at refining our pr- practices. Um, making sure that we're all on the same page on what are those shared, um, expectations. Um, and, um, you know, and ensuring that the teachers are really collaborating and, um, and. Through that coaching framework, it's about working together as teams. And so some of the things that, um, I think we're super excited about. Um, are, um, you know, getting some intervention teachers, so having some intervention classes for those students that are really struggling. Um, also, um, some additional, um, English learner supports. Um, and some coaches, we're going to have, um, some, um, more TOSAs this year focusing on, um. Really ha- helping the teachers doing differentiation and using the workshop modeling class so that they can have more small group time with the students. That need additional support and then being able to add enrichment for the students who are, um, who are at or above grade level. So. Um, as well as goodness, we're getting some more, um, social emotional counselors to support our kiddos. There's just a lot that we're excited about. Um, so we're looking at for this, um, part of the goal, looking at about one point two. Um, to one point three, um, million dollars being spent there. Um, and so of course, whenever we make these goals, we want to look at how are we measuring them? Um, and so as I said before, some of the data we have in right now, others we don't. Um, and so that's, um, kind of a, a waiting game. So for example, the CASP results will get, um, sometime this summer, late June, early July. Um, you know, we'll be looking at SAT and ACT scores, you know, how the kids are ready for. College preparation, whether it's our seal of biliteracy, you know, our, uh, CTE completion, A three G, um, as well. Um, graduation rate and some of these things, um, you know, it seems on the surface like, wow, you should know your graduation rate right now. But we actually don't like, uh, we know that we had two kids that didn't, um, weren't able to walk because they didn't pass one class. That's required, but right now they're going to, they're going to summer school. So if they pass this course, they'll be a graduate. Um, and so you really don't, you know, it's kind of a. A, a flowing pathway that goes up until fall on what's your actual graduation rate. Um, so we'll have more, um, hard, um, percentages on that, um, as well as if you look at. Um, college success data, we're actually looking at how many students. Have been and made it through college for four years, six years, two years. And so we have to wait for the colleges to put that data in. On who finished this, this, uh, spring and then we'll get that information of fall. So we'll be getting a, an update on a lot of, um, this data. In the, um, in October, November range, once we, all of that data is in. Um, our second goal is developing a cohesive culture of innovation and account- accountability. Um, and that, um, that is really looking at, you know, how are we developing the, um. The structures so that the teachers can and the staff can support our students. Um, so, you know, really working on our MTSS, which is, that's our system where we, we work and we collaborate as a staff to look at. How are we supporting all elements of the student? You know, if they're finding success in one academic or arts area, you know, how, how do we take that success? And, and move it to the other areas, um, and, you know, developing our special education program. We're really working, um, a lot on building. Um, some supports and collaboration between the, the special education, um, staff and the, um. The, um, general education teachers and, and working on co-teaching so that they can work together. Um, simultaneously in class, which it just gives students a lower student to teacher ratio and more support. Um, and, um, let's see, what, what else? Uh, intervention classes will be a part of that. And then, um, we're also looking at some parent training. Um, I know all of our parents this year have had so much fun working with their students at home. And have gotten a whole different perspective on, on the daily workings of education. And so. Um, we think this is the, the prime time to really, um, give, um, some parent training for how can they support their child? Hopefully, as they're going back to school full-time in the fall all year long, but how can they support them at home? Um, so really bringing in that whole, um, whole community aspect. Um, that is key at Natomas Charter in all schools, um, for supporting students. And so that's, um, about one point seven million, um. Dollars going towards that goal. Um, we will be making sure that we're meeting this and checking that we're meeting these goals. Um, looking at things like, um, you know, our specific our students with disabilities, how are they? Um, doing, you know, looking at their, um, their testing, uh, state testing results, which we always do, but we've added in some new. Indicators that we're looking at, like, how many of their are making progress towards their IEP goals? So their goals that are, um, having to do with, um, their in special education, um, looking at their average GPAs. You know, really looking at how are we, are we retaining our special education staff? Um, you know, looking at chronic absenteeism, you know, how engaged are the students? Um, and then, um, you know, looking at, are we retaining students in site-based programs, non-site-based programs? How is this really working for the students? Because that's where you really see, um, you know, how happy students are, not only how they're achieving, but. You know, if they're staying with us. Um, so that's, um. That's how we'll be checking up on ourselves, making sure that these goals are working. Um, and then, um, as far as expanding, um, oops, I think I skipped one. There we go. Expanding, um, our organizational capacity, um, that's really focused on making sure that our. School as a whole is ready to support and continue to support the needs of our students. So. Um, for example, we, part of our goal was to, um, really develop our non-site-based programs, our PACT and, um, VLA programs. And so working with them to, um, get different programs in place that really support the needs of the, um, the current population. Um, that are, um, utilizing those programs. So, um, for example, VLA having the dual enrollment. Program is a, a big benefit, um, for those students and then packed having, um, you know, some parent trainings and lots of workshops. Available, um, as well as really ensuring that we are getting, um, very solid. Um, dedicated and, um. Adequate staff to stay on and be a part of our, um, our school and making sure that we are. Um, really working towards our mi- mission and vision, um, and goals and staying true to what Natomas Charter School is. As we, um, you know, have, um, new staff come on board. Um, and so part of that, um, rollout, um, you know, student technology, we're continuing to be one-to-one, um, next year. Um, for our students, um, and making sure that we're training our staff on, you know, MTSS and how they, how they, um. Support students and then of course, keeping up with the changing needs of facilities and such, um. In this exciting world we are in. Um, and so we'll, um, be looking to ensure that we are meeting those goals. Looking at, um, you know, a staff retention, employee evaluation, um, the leadership opportunities that we're giving to grow within the. Organization, you know, our enrollment and retention in the different pu- programs. And my computer's not wanting to move anymore. Another slide, but it's not going. That's okay. It's a question slide. So there we go. So, um, I don't know if the board has any questions about the plan or any of the, the data that we are looking at. As, or feedback as we are planning.
Good question, Laura. Okay, so I was, um, contemplating a little bit on the. Two slides that you had, you know, with the, um. The graphs where the like kind of burgundy, this is where we started out in the gray. This is the percentage where we. Have improved. And it's, you may not have the answer to this. Um, question, because I feel like I'm a little bit down in the weeds, um. On my thought process. So this is information that covers our K through twelve.
K through eight. Um, they're the ones who, um, who did the I ready. And then I'll be adding in the juniors with the CASP, um, data. We, we use, um, the, um. The interim assessment blocks for the high schoolers, um, which is a part of the smarter balance system. But it's the way that it's set up is it's just small chunks, like looking at very specific standards. And so it's not a comprehensive. Where I can get data for ninth, tenth and twelfth grade, um, and they state actually doesn't suggest using their comprehensive interim assessment.
So I was trying to figure out, um, because, you know, even though we've shown, you know, great growth. Worse, these percentages are still, in my opinion, pretty concerning. Um, and I know one of the things that we have discussed before is, you know. We are getting students from all over, from different, um. Districts and classroom experiences. So we've always kind of prided ourselves and, you know. We take who comes to us and then we work to grow from there. Have we been able to kind of figure out, um, whether or not some of these percentages are skewed? Because, you know, we're assessing. The kindergarten and first graders who are probably coming to us from other districts or, you know. Not even really having any schooling or a preschool support. And they're kind of the same question for like the sixth grade. They're not necessarily coming from within the Natomas Charter School, um, community. And we're kind of starting with a fresh set of students and then are our percentages higher as we've held on to them? Um, for longer, so say maybe assessing fourth through fifth graders. And then assessing kind of like our eighth grade population. So we're really able to say. You know, just kind of for our own comfort level that once we've had them for a while. This is really where our students are at. Does that make sense?
Uh, that totally makes sense. Um, and yeah, I think, you know, for, for the most part, you know. Where we would see that change is where, um, where our big, um, enrollment changes are. So like the sixth grade, the ninth grade. Um, because most of, I'd say the bulk of the population that are coming in. Yeah, in the, the lower, in the elementary areas, they, they tend to stay. And we're seeing that trend, um, not only at. Um, Star Academy, but at PACT where we're seeing, you know, kind of families coming in earlier, um, and staying. There is some, some movement. Um, but yeah, and that's actually, uh, data that I was, um, digging into today, looking, as I was looking at our, um. Low performing student block grant, um, which is another presentation I'll get to do for you guys in the fall. Uh, but I'm starting to look at the data and write the report and starting to look at like how many of those kids that are coming to us. Or that we have that are low, are progressing, um, at a cer- you know, at a, at a rate, like how long does it take to, you know, kind of. Get them up to, to where they want to be. And so it's. Looking at the data from this year, it varied, but we did have a chunk of kids that were getting up to grade level. Um, as, you know, as they were with us. So I don't have like specific data on that yet, but that's definitely something that, um. That I'm looking at as we're starting to do that. And I'm, um, also, uh, going to be working with the, um, principals on. Looking at their individual academy data. And so then they can really pull out like who, you know, who transferred from another academy, who came in from an. A, a different place. Um, so we can, we can start to look at that too. Yeah, yeah. No, but that's definitely something, you know, that we, we are very aware of and really looking at. You know, where are the kids coming from? And you know, what, what percentage are coming from art within Natomas Charter School and are not? I was just talking with, uh, Ms. Goldman about that the other day. And, you know, how do we see the, the growth once we get them here? So.
Okay, and I, I just, you know, feel like it's important to kind of drill that down so we can. Really try to work to correct it. So we just kind of need to know. You know, is it that we're getting in a group of students who maybe aren't performing as high? Um, as everyone would like, and then we really are needing to work and support to get them. Where everyone wants to be, or is there something, you know, on art and. That's not really working within our own program and we need to make adjustments there.
Absolutely. And as we're, uh, as time goes on, and I think our, our special, our special education department gets, um, more. I don't know, has more resources available. I think, um, you know, we're going to see a, a rise in that. And we've, we've been very cognizant of that. Um, I also, um, as I, when I get the LPAC data in. One of the things I look at is, you know, how, how, how quickly are we able to redesignate our students and making sure that we're. We're not having kids kind of turn into long, um, long-term English learners, you know, that are within our school. Um, and so, yeah, that's definitely something that, that we, we have a keen eye on and. And that's where we're getting a lot of, uh, professional development for our teachers and. The TOSAs are going to be going in to really look at like, how do we focus on those students that are maybe behind and need that extra support? How can we do that within the classroom, rather than just saying, now you have to stay after school, you know? Type of thing. How can we give them that? So I appreciate you asking that question. Anybody else?
I'm sorry if I missed this, Laura, but, um, I know you mentioned that we have seventy percent of the students, you know, who are. Um, attending our back, um, in person. And do we have any additional data as far as? Next year, I know, you know, with everybody getting vaccinated, so.
Uh, the plan for next year is that everyone will be back on campus. Uh, that's our plan. That's the, what it looks like. The plan is, um, coming from the state. Um, is that the distance learning, um, will expire, um, the end of this month and then we'll be back to the traditional setup. And, um, we've been, we just attended, uh, Mr. Dobson and, uh, Ms. Swab and I just attended this whole. Meeting about the changes to independent study and how they're, you know, they're planning to, to change things and. Kind of cognizant of that new change for next year. Um, so the plan is for, you know, families, if they are not. Um, planning on coming back to school, um, then, you know, helping them to get to one of the, um. The, um, independent, um, study or homeschool programs. Um, but yes, we're, we're intending for everyone to come back, come back to school, see their lovely faces, um, next year. So, but it will be an adjustment for those thirty percent, so.
Karen, I can add just a little bit to that and that, you know, we've gone through the whole, um. Registration process in the sense of sending families out their information for next year and everyone's returned. You know, like they're coming back to Star Academy, leading edge or PFA, um, you know, I, right now, we still don't have the CDC or, or CDPH guidance. For what next school year is going to look like. Um, and I suspect there may be some families that change their mind, you know, based on whatever that guidance says. Uh, but as, you know, as Laura said, are really our plan right now, Star Leading Edge and PFA will continue to operate as a site-based program like we always have. And that, you know, if we have families that are interested in being more independent, we're going to be looking at options for them through PACT and VLA. I know in talking to the, the executive director of the district's new virtual program, they're in the same place where. It's a enrollment, it's like a little all over the map and they're kind of in the, the same feeling that they're not really going to know. Until, you know, a week or two before school starts, you know, once that guidance is out and families have really kind of had to make a decision. Um, I think it's a little bit easier for those of us with the twelve-year-olds and up because vaccination is a viable option for us right now. It's a little bit more challenging for the, you know, kindergarten through roughly sixth grade age group because vaccinations aren't available yet.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to tell Laura, thank you. I know LCAP is a beast of a project. Appreciate.
You did a great job wrangling all of us. So I really appreciate her. Yes.
It's a team effort, man. We, Joe Addy and Anita and I have had a ton of sit-down fun with LCAP for sure. So, as well as the whole admin team and all the staff, they don't want to hear about it anymore. But thank you.
All right. Thanks Laura. Dr. Wood, do you have an enrollment update?
Yes, I do have an enrollment update. You know, if you look at our enrollment numbers, basically we're closing out the school year officially 12 students higher than we had originally budgeted for at the beginning of the year. Most of that growth in the end really came from our non-site-based programs. Probably more importantly though, since around the topic of enrollment updates, talking about the coming school year. So for the coming school year, we basically have all of our seats full and we have waiting lists in all gray levels. The one area we were a little anxious about was sixth grade because we saw our waiting list go down to, actually, we had a zero waiting list at the leading edge at one point in time. So we've been actually advertising via social media and our signs out front about, you know, having openings in sixth grade. And as of today, we actually have 13 students on the sixth grade waiting list at leading edge and 17 on the sixth grade waiting list at PFA, which is great. That probably gives us a little bit of cushion. In a normal year, our numbers might change roughly five to 10 kids over the summer. I mean, at this moment in time, everyone has accepted their space and said that they're coming. But, you know, life kind of gets in the way in the next 58 days sometimes. And so we have a little bit of change, but having these cushions in sixth grade helps us. And in terms of why that's going on, we realize sixth grade is a huge entry point for all of the charter schools here in Natomas. So there's a lot of, you know, trading kids back and forth, if you will. Also, because of things like the vaccination clinic that were going on, some of the charter schools have been a little later to do their enrollment processes than we have. Because those same staff were actually working at the vaccination clinics. So there's just been sort of a delay in all of the processes. If we see our numbers dipping anymore, we actually have a plan to do some more direct mail marketing. We have a postcard that Kathy Ramaramolet has designed. And it would largely target students probably in the 95838, which is the real LINDO zip code, along with 95835, which is the North Natomas zip code, kind of, if you will, neighborhood to our campus. So that's enrollment update. Jen, do you want me to move on to the COVID update? Oh, well, you're muted. But I'm going to take that as a yes.
Indeed, indeed. It wouldn't be a meeting without a COVID update.
It wouldn't be a meeting without a COVID update. So let me, oops, no wrong sites. So I have just a couple of quick slides to go through, nothing super exciting, but stuff that the board should be kind of aware of as we're getting ready to welcome people back. So we made it stage one. We got through all four stages this year. We had all the kids back on campus. As you know, someone said earlier, not a lot of schools did that, but we did here at Natomas Charter. Here's some glimpses from the last week or two as we closed out the year. So we had field day at Star Academy. We had our graduation and promotion at Rayleigh Field or Center Health Park. Thank you for everyone that was able to come and join us. And we had our fifth grade drive-through celebration on, on Wednesday at Star Academy. This was the leading edge eighth grade breakfast, which is normally in the, in the library media center, was out on the field this year. And then we were able to close out the year with some performances. So this is a little glimpse of our vocal concert and our instrumental concert. So we were able to really, you know, make the most of our in-person togetherness. In terms of COVID rates, we did finally make it to the orange tier here in Sacramento County. You know, this, this whole tiering process actually ends tomorrow. But we made it to the orange tier here in Sacramento County, which was, which is important. You know, the, the lower we can get these case rates before the county opens up, the better. Just a little update on testing and vaccination. So COVID testing, we actually did nine weeks of on-campus COVID testing. Round of applause to Ziba and many of our other staff members who really helped with that. We conducted almost 600 PCR tests here on campus. We had a less than 1% positivity rate out of all those tests that we conducted. And for right now, testing is paused for the summer. We're not sure if we're going to need to fire it up in the fall, but we have everything sort of queued that we could. And then, as I mentioned during our celebrations at the beginning, you know, the community vaccination clinic ran for 20 weeks. We had over 3,000 vaccinate or 30,000 vaccinations that were delivered through that, that, that clinic. And you can have some pictures of our volunteer crew here. The last vaccination clinic was on June 11th. At this point, it's closed. You know, I think the district will revisit in the fall if there is a need to reopen it, you know, especially as we're trying to do large groups of elementary students. But the big thing that I just want to kind of give the board a little update on because this is what's going to be occupying our minds as a leadership team over the next few weeks. It's just summer school and planning for the current year. So summer school did start today. We have basically three different things going on. So we have our Knights Quest virtual program, which is available to all students. It's a self-paced online summer school enrichment and support program. We have our in-person, we call them our summer boost programs for our elementary and middle school students. Those started today. They're four days a week, Monday through Thursday for the next three weeks. And then we have a high school credit recovery program that's going on, that is for four weeks. And students can remediate up to two classes during our credit recovery program. Right now, all of these programs are operating under the COVID protocols that we had last school year. Even though, you know, and we all sort of, I think, are joking a little bit that COVID ends tomorrow. It doesn't actually end for K-12 schools. All of the rules that are changing and coming out at this point don't apply to healthcare industry. They don't apply to the transportation industry and they don't currently apply to K-12 schools. And in our case, it's because we're working with the population that's not age-eligible to be vaccinated. We're waiting to see what the CDC and CDPH come out with in terms of changes, but right now it's not changing. In terms of instructional programs, as I mentioned earlier, our thinking and, and everyone else is thinking I talked to in the Natomas region is we're all returning to pre-pandemic formats. Also, the legislature is getting rid of distance learning, but they're making some modifications to independent study, which guide VLA impact. And those modifications are going to make independent study look a little bit more like distance learning. So more requirements for daily live instruction, more often check-in. So, you know, like weekly check-ins with an educational advisor as opposed to maybe bi-weekly or once a month. We might be looking at some board policy changes depending on how this language is changed by the legislature. So in August, we may be bringing to you updated independent study policies. And all of this is part of the state budget negotiations that are going on right now. So hopefully by, you know, I should say hopefully by the end of the month, we should know what we're doing a little bit. And then the other issue that we're, we're just navigating is, you know, as a school, we have two sets of guidelines that we have to operate with. So for all of our employees, we fall under all the Cal OSHA guidelines like everyone else. And if you've been paying attention to that, they came out with one set of regulations. There was some blowback on it. So they're revoting on some new regulations this week that would take effect on the 28th. Basically, when that happens, face coverings would become optional for vaccinated employees and required for unvaccinated employees. We, as an employer, would be encouraging everyone to get vaccinated. But ultimately, we would have to track vaccination records for anyone who wants to not have their mask. So use myself as an example. I'm fully vaccinated. If I didn't want to wear my mask on a regular basis, I would need to give proof of my vaccination status to our HR department. So what exactly that looks like, where it's still to be determined, but that's the idea. And in terms of contact tracing and exposure, unvaccinated would still be required to quarantine. And anytime we have an outbreak, which is really defined as three or more employee cases in the same area, then we have to make testing available for our employees. So that's why we're sort of just leaving our testing resources kind of in the queue. And then in terms of students, so that's just talking about how we would handle employees. In terms of students, we're still waiting on that mid-June guidance. In terms of what happens with face covering is really unknown right now. In terms of vaccinations, I imagine, you know, we're still encouraging it for everyone. Whether or not we're tracking status of students, really don't know. We do know that anytime there's an exposure on campus, the unvaccinated would still be required to quarantine for up to 10 days and be learning remotely. And then outbreak procedures, there've not, there haven't been outbreak procedures for students historically. It's been tied to employees. What's kind of weird is that the Cal OSHA regulations literally only apply to the employees. They don't apply to the students. So as long as three or more staff members, you know, don't get COVID, then we haven't had to do regular testing, but we have just provided it because it made logical sense. So these are some things that we're going to be navigating. And hopefully by August, we'll have some, some clarity as we get back to starting school. So with that, any questions I can answer for the board, our quick COVID update? All right. Fun, fun, fun.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Dr. Ellis, with our first read of board policy 5132, our dress code.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. The dress code policy had some additions to it. We did some modifications for this year coming up. Namely, within that first paragraph, we did modify it to clarify what the dress code intent is. There was some confusion on the purpose of the dress code. And really, it is about more of the expectations. And we want to make sure that the expectations do not enforce or reinforce, excuse me, marginalization of any group based on race, gender, ethnic, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, ability level, body type, household income, gender identity, cultural services, or any other categorization. So we updated that information. We updated the two, the pair, I'm sorry, the paragraph right underneath it that says we prohibit any clothing accessory or appearance that does not, that does the following violates the dress expectations below and endangers health and safety of other students. There's a change in item number one that clarifies where shirts have to sit. As you may be aware, there was a bit of a concern by some students that they were concerned about where shirts would sit because current fashions do not necessarily have the shirt meet the pants. So we clarified that shirts must have shoulder straps and be designed to sit at the waist or lower. So that means that students who, through no fault of their own, might have a shirt that raises some when they move, but it's designed to sit at the waist, those students would not be breaking our dress expectations. There's another clarification in item number four. We clarified that headgear, hats, hoodies, caps are permitted for religious, cultural and medical reasons. And the last thing that we clarified was the items in bold after item 12. And this states that primarily dress expectations, it rests with the parents and the students. And that students who are not adhering to our community expectations will be given the opportunity to borrow clothing or call it, call a parent to receive appropriate clothing. Students who repeatedly violate the dress expectation community agreement will not be allowed to participate in school-sponsored events, including, but not limited to dances, productions, leadership, link through web, et cetera. This dress code, as we mentioned to the students, it is reviewed on a regular basis and that they can contact the student services director, whomever that person is, if they have concerns. And so those were the updates to the dress code. All right. Are there questions or clarifications that I may provide?
Thank you for that. This is Karen. I was just wondering as, as far as the enforcement, I know that there are some issues with enforcement of the dress code. And I guess that's something that you handle as a policy for the teachers and staff?
So that's more a procedural versus the policy. And yes, I'll talk about it some when I do my presentation shortly about the work that we're doing with diversity, equity, inclusion, as well as updating how we are making sure that all teachers know the expectations and know the process of sending students to the office if need be. Another part of it, as stated in the policy, is that this is really a community expectation and agreement that students and their parents are signing when they sign the handbook. Primarily, those responsibilities are still going to rest with the student and their parent to adhere to the community agreement. Because no matter how much enforcement that we do as a school, if the parents and students are not following the expectations, it somewhat ties our hands. And we want to make sure that it's less about a code or a law and more about our community and our community having expectations that we can adhere to together. And that was part of the reason why we had a town hall meeting with students to get their feedback and opinion. I had the opportunity to talk to some parents and get their feedback and thoughts on the dress code as well. And making sure that it is something that is, allows students to express themselves, but also has a standard of dress that is not impeding other students' ability to learn. Because primarily, the dress code is always about safety and about ensuring that all students have access to their learning.
Thank you. And I really, I really appreciate you and the staff acting so quickly and having that town hall and building that community and the agreements. And it was, it was just great. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ellis. Don't go anywhere. Because you and Dr. Rhonda, will you please help me out with your last name?
Russfold.
Oh, just like it looks, Dr. Rhonda Russfold. Our student services and special education update.
Yes, I am going to share my screen if that is okay. And let me get into presentation mode. I can no longer see you all because I don't have my second stream. So if someone could let me know if you can see. Okay, excellent. So yes, this is our student services update for this year. I am very excited to be able to have Rhonda, Dr. Russfold, sharing this with me this year. So let's see if I can move this forward. So as just giving us an agenda, did my screen just do something crazy? Nope.
That's good.
You're good.
I can no longer see my presentation. It just went away from my screen. So I'm going to pretend that it is sharing and that it's there. So just for a, an outline, we'll be covering special education, counseling and culture climate. I love this picture as an analogy of not only this year, but in our upcoming years. If you can see the person in the front who is one of our parents, he's kind of looking behind him. He's the leader, but he's kind of looking behind, making sure that everybody's okay. One of his children is looking towards the side to explore what's there. But the important part are the twins in the back. We're doing this together. And all things this year in student services has been how are we going to look back and get some of the things we need while moving forward and always remembering that we're together? So Dr. Russfold is going to cover special education. I am thoroughly excited to have her be my partner in crime with SPED. I will cover counseling and culture climate. When we look at special education, if you remember when I came before the board in 2019, I said, we have a three-year plan. We're going to design and deliver. Then we're going to result, refine and evaluate. Then we're going to have a continuous improvement. We're supposed to be refine and evaluate this year, but a little thing happened during the 2019, 2020 school year. We were marching along and we were doing our thing. And then March 13th, this thing called COVID happened. So really, we're looking at special education being this extended year one. So we're still in this design and deliver phase. And Dr. Russfold will share with you where we're at there, what that refine and evaluate looks like. And then that lastly, the continuous improvement. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Russfold. Or did you want me to cover this as well, Dr. Russfold?
That's okay. I can start here. Thank you. And, and you did okay with my name. It's hard to say. You just say all the sounds. It doesn't sound like it would happen, but it does. Well, thanks for having me. As you guys know, I joined in October and hit the ground running. I learned as fast as I could, as, as on, on hyperspeed to, to get caught up and support our kids. Here we have our special education enrollment. And you'll see as, as the years went on, our, our enrollment in our special education program and the students that have IEPs has grown. We are just about at 10% of our total population using our May Cbeds enrollment number. So currently about 195 kids that we support that have IEPs that are in our classes across all of our academies. And you can go ahead. So as we think about this coming up year, this is a breakdown of caseload by academy. We have, STAR has about 40 students and that's about 6% of their population. Our highest academy was students with IEPs for, across academies is PACT actually. And they have about 21.5% of, of their total population has. And they have about twenty-one point five percent of of their total population has students with IEPs. And um, leading edge about nine and PFA about nine, VLA about fifteen. So pretty um evenly spread across our academies and we have spread our staff accordingly. Um, so in the fall year, we are going to start with eight education specialists across all of our academies to support those students. Continuing with our school, two school psychs, but to join that school psych team is going to be an intern. So we're excited about uh that person to try to build our capacity and um. Bring in other students to help support our 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 little, our other students. Um, um, increasing our paraprofessionals. We'll have seventeen kind of and a half across all of our academies. So that's a pretty good growth from the last two years. Um, two speech pathologists, um, one contractor is turning into a, into an hours. And so um we'll have those um actually be our staff members. The deaf and hard of hearing specialist, that's me. I see some of our students that are deaf and hard of hearing. Um, we'll have onboard a SOPA that was a contractor that's going to be staff. And um a school nurse. Dr. Ellis is going to talk about that a little bit more. But we're really excited about that um person joining our special education team. We still have some contracted services. These are for services that either um maybe don't warrant a full FTE. Or um, or there, there may be a low incidence, so it's just a handful of kids or a handful of service. So we still have those contracted services for the fall. And it includes adaptive PE, assistive technology, orthopedic impairment specialist. So as the kids come to us, whatever their needs are, we find them and we make it happen. Um, so that's our plan for the fall. Uh, next slide. So this is kind of a um overview of the first year. And the, a few wins of that first year were um creating the systems, getting the groundwork. Um, some positive feedback as we moved away from the district. But lessons learned after that first year um was we need to focus on staffing, we need to get the right tools. And we needed the special ed staff um kind of more integrated within their academies. And so as I came, next slide, and as I came in for year two. Um, I saw some of the, the, the winds of those things happening. Um, and we were able to complete all of our SPED assessments from spring of twenty twenty. Um, I, in some of our other districts in in the neighboring area, um, still had some leftover assessments from that time period. We are caught up. We've gone through all of them. Um, big kudos to our, all of our evaluators across all of the academies. Our special education staff, we transitioned between three different kinds of services. And I know that's hard as teachers. Um, it's also hard when you're thinking about trying to provide. Speech and language articulation services over the computer and um helping manage behavior at home. So we transitioned from virtual to hybrid and then all the way back again to um. To be actually being in person. Um, our virtual IEPs provided flexibilities. We found that to be a win. Um, where maybe other parents could participate that weren't able to, or grandparents, or. Um, maybe a family member that was working could take a lunch break and attend an IEP. So we had a lot of great family participation by offering some flexibility. So that was kind of a win um through the process. And we've um in the, in the time that I've been here, just improving our policies and procedures in general. As part of that refining and evaluating figuring out what, what do we need and how do we make it better? I mean, I think that's been a win and that's going to continue to be a win as we um continue to improve our policies. Some things that we learned, at least that I learned since October, is that we need to spend a little more time um. Co-planning, having our special education staff working with our general education staff, not just pushing into the classrooms, but actually. Planning with those teachers and and planning for assessment, a planning for um lessons, a planning for exams. So that's going to be something we look at in the next year. And then also just kind of refocusing again on our staff retention. This was a hard year for a lot of people. And if we're able to spend a little more energy and and thought into um on the staff for our next year, that's going to be good for us. And lastly, lessons learned was professional development. So we could use some um support on. I guess moving through all of these different levels of teach, we're, we're virtual, now we're back on person, now we're doing all these things. We could use some professional development. So those were some lessons learned, I think, from. Year two, kind of year one, crazy COVID. So a- as we move into what really kind of is year three. Um, these are the things that we're going to be working on. This is the stuff that makes me smile, that makes me excited, that makes me love to do my job. Is trying to build a culture of inclusion. And these are the different ways we're going to try to aim for that in the next year. Um, we're going to expand our capacity to serve students that have greater needs. Um, you know, we may have students that um maybe have more um more intense services than what we're used to seeing and and supporting. But we're going to build our capacity to make that happen. Um, we have plans for some more social pragmatic groups across academies. Um, where our speech pathologist and our behaviorist team are going to work with students. To help support them. I think it's especially important as we come out of, out of COVID. Um, and as we get back into classrooms, so kind of realigning um what, what our standards are for school. Also, our speech pathologist at the high school level kind of wants to reframe some of her services as a communication lab. Right? It's not really speech anymore. It's, it's how do you learn and build communication skills? Not only for high school, but for post-secondary skills as well. Um, I'm excited about that. Um, also looking at all the different types of professional development for our teachers. And that's writing goals, that's writing IEPs, that's providing services, information about different disabilities and and um how to support them. Um, we're also working on build, um, including our speech pathologist, school psychologist, and our other related service providers in the MTSS process. So using some of these maybe special education services. For some of our students that don't have IEPs and maybe we can provide some services and supports, maybe the tier-two level for those kids. Um, also um integrating all of the evidence-based practices into our service delivery. So it's looking at what are we doing, why are we doing it, how are we doing it, what's the research behind it? We got a couple nerds on the admin team here, so those are the kinds of things that make me excited and um working with our team to make sure the things we're doing are evidence-based. Um, the last two things, broaden support from our behaviorist team. So we're looking at having them. Support our general education teachers as well as our students with IEPs. And um, and being a part of MTSS. The kid needs help, let's use them, right? It does, they don't have to have an IEP to get those supports. And lastly is um, touching back on the expanding co-planning and co-teaching opportunities. So um, we have dabbled a bit as that fits in and as it works, but I'd love to grow that in the next couple of years. Um, and it starts with, starts with just getting them in the room together, co-planning, talking about learning and talking about what's working and what's not working. And that will help that um happen. So those are the things we're doing as we're moving forward, building a culture of inclusion. That's our um, our vision of model uh of a model special education program is that all students can learn together. And these are some of the things we're going to be doing. And then I hand it back to you, Dr. Ellis.
So the beauty of student services is that we really have those three focus. We have special education, counseling, and our culture climate. So counseling this year, we had some wins. We had some uh significant wins. We had our peer ambassador program is off the ground. Peer ambassador program is similar to the link crew or web that we've spoke of before. Where peer ambassadors provide the, some peer mediation. When there's conflict, instead of always coming to the adult for help, there's peers that are there, that are trained. To help the students solve their problems. So it gets to problem solving as a community again versus always going to the adult for help. Our ninth, it was ninth and tenth graders who are working with sixth and seventh graders. So it's the high school students, students working with middle schoolers. For next year in the fall, we will have three counseling interns, two here at the Black Rock Campus, one at STAR Academy. And one psychologist intern. The beauty of interns is that we have the opportunity to help develop. Individuals who are going to be professionals in the field. And it gives us an opportunity to leverage our current resources and have more adults who are specialized in mental health fields. We have purchased Character Strong, which is a SEL, a social emotional learning curriculum, as well as some character building. And that is going to be used as a universal support for all of our students. So it will be in advisory classes at PFAA, homeroom classes at Leading Edge. Caroline Hines, our elementary school counselor, she'll be doing it in all of her um. Classes that she does at the elementary school level. VLA will also integrate it as well as PACT. So it gives us a chance to make sure that all of our students have the same base understanding. And we can build from there for students who need more resources. We are going to continue to provide our social emotional youth groups. So at each of our academies as a supplemental support, so for students who just need a little bit extra. Our counselors and our school psychologists have provided small group intervention and support for those students. On everything from anxiety to friendship building to depression, uh grief, separation and loss. They had a safe spaces group to really, when we were going through different racial and civil unrest in our society. Some of our students wanted to have a safe space to process their feelings, so they had that. Another huge win for student services this year is that we were awarded as a school, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. From the state of California to develop our MTSS program. We received the contract, I received it in the mail today, we got it in email last week. Uh, so I'm still going through it and seeing what I actually agreed to when I submitted this grant. So we're excited to have the opportunity to develop our multi-tiered systems of support. And have all of our staff with the same understanding across all five academies. This last huge win was an unexpected COVID win. Prior to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um. We always had a significant number of hospitalizations for students who were struggling with mental health. Suicide ideation, depression, anxiety, uh eating disorders. We had up to twenty to thirty students per year that had been hospitalized up to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. During twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we've actually seen our hospitalizations decrease. Part of that was the students who were struggling with socially emotional school anxiety. They were home and they were able to access their learning on the computer. They weren't in those positions that were causing them anxiety, stress, depression. So we are going to hopefully be able to continue with some of the supports that we have with our small groups. To make sure when those students come back on campus, they can maintain their mental health supports. Other wins. Susanna Shanktiffany, who was our academic counselor, she did a review of all of the college applications submitted. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. We had two thousand one hundred and one applicants between twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one with a ninety-seven percent acceptance rate. That is significant. And a large part of that is due to Susanna Shanktiffany's work in supporting students and writing letters of recommendations. And making sure that they're ready to go forward, making sure that all of our courses are A through G. A through G is the college uh eligibility courses, English, math, social studies, electives. Uh, language other than English, electives, um, that was it. And so she makes sure that our phenomenal teaching staff, so those are the items that help us have that ninety-seven percent acceptance rate. This year, what we did to make sure, as Laura was mentioning. On really making sure students are prepared for post-secondary success. We have our summer school, that's K-12. As Joe mentioned, we have enrichment as well as our um course remediation. We have a college application boot camp. So Susanna Shanktiffany has put together a boot camp for students who are going to be seniors next year. And a few juniors rising, so their sophomore is going to be juniors. To put together, what does it really take to apply to college and to get into the college of your choice? So she's going to be doing that for a week during our summer school. We also partnered with a community organization uh is called the Paula Willhite Angels is the organization. But they have a program called I-Vibe. I am victorious, independent, bold, and empowered. Is geared towards young women who identify as black or other racial, ethnic minorities. That's what it's geared towards, but it's really open to all girls. And one of the key uh components that we've discovered is young girls, in particular those who are identified as black. The information they shared with us is that sometimes they don't feel like they belong. Sometimes they don't see themselves as successful because the messages they receive is. Well, you know, there's this achievement gap and you're not achieving to the same level as other people. And that, according to these young girls that we spoke to, that takes a hit on their belief that they can do school. So I-Vibe helps them reframe and see that, you know what? There are people like Ashante Norton in the world who do these amazing things and they look like you. There's Dr. Marata, it's who's looks like you and does these amazing things. There's Dr. Ellis, there's Dr. Gandhi. And really showing that there are more than just one type of woman who's successful. They have transgender individuals who will be coming to speak with them. So they can see this, it's just not one type of successful woman. So we're really excited about that, starting with this. The other part is our dual enrollment. It has doubled from the fall of twenty twenty to the fall of twenty twenty-one. Dual enrollment are those students who will be taking courses at the community college while they're enrolled with us. So we went from seventy-three in the fall to one, uh fall of twenty twenty to one fifty fall of twenty twenty-one. The things where we're continuing to refine, we're continuing to refine parent university. We see that as a definite need to be able to provide our parents with resources to best support their children at home. Community referrals. During COVID, the really big gaping hole was that. We can't be all things to all people at all times. Who's doing that work in the community that we can refer our families to and our students to? So we are working on developing our community referral system so that we have those relationships. And the I-Vibe program is one of our first entrees into working collaboratively with community organizations. Lastly, are the universal and supplemental supports for all of our academies. The universal supports are those things that we do for all kids. And the supplemental are, what are those groups? What are the small activities that we need to do with a smaller number of students so they can have success? The last part that I'm going to talk about is our culture climate. So another huge win was our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. I spoke with you all about that, I believe, in April. It started May of twenty twenty. It was a staff-initiated um. Initiative that has really, everyone on, has embraced it. In July of twenty twenty, we provided some professional development to staff who wanted to do a book study with us and a few other professional development opportunities. We expanded to include parents and students in our DEI work. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, I'll also call it DEI as I'm speaking about it. We met with individual academies to assess where they see their DEI needs to be. We had a chance, you'll see the picture there, we participated in DEI training, that leadership group that was. Parents, students, and staff. We had a chance to participate in training with Mariana Sousa to hone our skills and really prepare for the work in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. So Mariana will continue to work with us as a staff as well as with our parents and students. So health and safety, Joe's already talked on it, so I'll just go quickly. We had our vaccination clinic. This is one of our sixth graders. She was so excited to get her vaccine. She's like, Dr. Ellis, can I take a picture? Her mom was in tears. Like, yes, you can. I'm so excited. We had over six hundred COVID PCR tests that allowed us to do prom, the silver lining productions. And having our students be in large groups together. We could, we did complete the safety plan, but we paused our drills. It was more important for us to get into school than to do some of those safety drills. So I did review with the staff all the safety drill requirements, but we did not have drills this year with students. We will go back to that next year. Lastly, as I take a deep breath, we hired a nurse and I want to go, what, what? Woohoo! I have been your public health nurse. I've been doing all things public health with. Zea, uh with Ziva, with Michelle Honeycutt, and with Maribel Zell. They've really led the charge. And my one-year science, I'm just telling y'all a secret, it did not prepare me to be a nurse. So we are so excited to have a nurse on board. She will be starting with us this summer. She is uh very familiar with our school. She has a daughter who goes here and she's worked with uh Natomas Unified. So we are excited to continue to partner with Natomas Unified School District. Uh, as we bring on our own nurse to our site. So with that, are there any questions for Rhonda or I?
I don't have a question, Dr. Ellis, but uh let me know, and I'm sure other board members might be interested, on how we can support. On how we can support the I-Vibe, uh, group if you want us to come and. You know, listen, share, whatever, uh, please count, count me in, I'm sure others are interested too. Thank you, sounds very, very interesting.
I just wrote your name down, so yes, I will connect you.
Congratulations on all of those wins, oh my gosh. It's just amazing, all the work that you're doing. I really love the, um, what was it called, Strong?
Oh, Character Strong.
Yeah, Character Strong, I'm so glad that you're adding that to the advisory classes and, um. And working that through all the academies, so congratulations.
Thank you, I will share it with my team, they are amazing.
Yeah, and Dr. Ellis, please count us all in for I-Vibe, because if we aren't, um, you know, available ourselves, we may be able to connect you with networks of folks who, who are.
I already wrote all your names down.
Okay, I'm in, I'm in.
Thank you, thank you.
Before we transition to our next agenda item, are we continuing, um, the Zoom IEP meetings?
Good question, um, yes, we're, we're trying to put a preference for in-person meetings, but we understand that the flexibility is definitely appreciated for families. So, um, we're gonna, it's, it's allowed, so we're gonna allow the flexibility for families when we can.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments for Dr. Ellis and Dr. Ruff's fault? It's because I have it spelled phonetically on my paper. All right, uh, Performing and Fine Arts Academy presentation, Dr. Gandhi, please.
Good evening, everyone, um, I'm going to share my screen and then we'll get started. Okay, um. All right, first and foremost, I would like to thank the board for their continued support this past year. Um, also a special thank you to our directors and the other actual administrators. For their support, guidance and leadership as I step into this role. All right, let's get started, um, so when I look back at PFAA and actually look ahead. I can't help but be proud of the growth that we have made as an academy. We've grown, we've reflected and are excited about the Renaissance of PFAA. Um, so this year I had some big shoes to fill when I took over for Mr. Demerit. It was also a year to observe and watch in preparation for next year. Um, despite COVID, we set the vision for MTSS, we've had PLCs. And I personally attended every single MTSS grade level to model and set the vision moving forward for next year. We developed our data tracking system, we do still have some work to do next year in refining it. We held over 50 SST meetings and over 4504 meetings to support our students. We started, uh, learning hubs in October and we're the first academy to move forward with it. Because as a staff, as a PFAA staff, we were ready to have our students back on campus. Um, once students started returning to campus, we did see a huge shift in mental health and grades almost immediately. We also saw a huge increase in parents requesting that their students also return to campus as, as the word spread. And so we ended the year, um, I think approximately 80% of our students did come back, um, by the end of the year. Um, also with the help of our special education team. We were able to build our bridge classes into our master schedule for this year. And began collaboration between SPED and, um, Gen Ed. As we move towards building our co-teaching model for next year, as Dr. Russell shared. Um, we will be working with our SPED PFAA team to ensure that there is continuous collaboration. Between SPED and Gen Ed, that, um, IEP accommodations are being implemented fully. And that our Gen Ed staff are partners in developing progress on goals with our SPED team. We did start the process this year, but we'll be in, um, implementing it entirely next year to ensure that all students are making progress. And our SPED team ended the year with the celebration of the wins reflected and next steps as we work toward building our community. Which was really exciting to see. We also, for the first time ever, introduced an in-house credit recovery program for our students. Um, where they were able to rectify their Ds and Fs from first semester. Many of our students benefited, um, from that when they were able to raise their grades to passing and/or be, um. In compliance with A through G. We also started our summer school program, which started today for high school students and our connection program for our, our middle school students. We currently at the high school level have three facilitators and approximately 80 students. Enrolled in various courses to either get ahead by completing their PE requirement and/or remediation. To make sure they continue to be A through G eligible. Um, with math, we did adopt CPM as our math curriculum for middle school. As a former instructional coach, I really believe in this, uh, math program for our, our middle school students. And our community as a whole. Um, I do think it's the right one because it's collaborative and team-based. As a parent, per, on a personal level, my own child has navigated, uh, CPM, so I have, uh, so I do have parental experience with that as well. And I really believe that this program is going to help us grow, um, in terms of making some progress on our dashboard as well. Um, we unfortunately, due to COVID, we're not able to implement the actual curriculum with fidelity this year. However, with the addition of a math coach like Ms. Barial, uh, mentioned. And some PD that, uh, this summer, I'm confident that we will be able to progress, um, in a positive direction. We also administered, um, I-Ready three times this year for our middle school students, which hasn't been done yet. And, um, um, also administered IABs for our, our high school students in ELA. And the MDPT, um, in math, uh, which is the, the readiness assessment. Uh, moving forward, we will use our PD time to analyze the data in our teams. In order to refine our instruction within the actual classroom at the tier one level. Um, exciting news, um, each department was able to host, uh, one show in the spring after. We reopened, which was exciting and actually necessary for our community. Um, it was uplifting to see our students do what they love and, um, and see them on stage. Um, even if it was outdoors for our staff, it was amazing to see our community come back together in unity. Um, next year we are planning for bigger and better productions as we look towards. One Voice NCS and our, and one theme that will unite all of our productions together. And also some cross-curricular building as well. Um, for an example, our, um, history and our arts team, foreign language and our arts team really making it, um, one voice. Um, through, through NCS, but also one unified cohesive pattern, um, at PFAA. We really do want to focus on being cohesive next year as we work to actually rebuild our community. Um, just some data, um, uh, here are some grades data. There was definitely a decrease in students receiving Ds and Fs from quarter one to semester one. Um, there were more decreases beyond this. Um, one student, uh, submitted their work from the, uh, first semester for the credit recovery. Program that we implemented, um, for the first semester. Quarter three, uh, there was an uptick again, which is actually normal. Um, because these are typically progress grades, so if students are going to struggle, we actually want them to struggle. Here versus a semester one or semester two, because those grades do go on their transcripts. Also, it is important to note that quarter three ended before students returned back to campus. So I do, um, anticipate that the decrease will be even lower for semester two. Um, because students are now or, or were back to campus. Um, the, the grades data right here is empty because teachers actually are currently submitting grades. And so grades actually aren't due until Wednesday. Um, so the next slide is our I-Ready data. So this is our, our I-Ready, um, reading data, as you can see. Um, we, we have an increase from 61% to 69% in the green. Um, and we, we, again, just want to mention that the actual diagnostic three was done in person. So, so some of that could be acquainted to being back on campus, which is good news. Um, we also saw a decrease in our, in our Reds from 14 to 10%. Um, and, and the students who were two or more below were also invited to the summer school program which started today. Next slide, um, so the next slide is our math data. Um, I was especially actually excited to see the green go from 38% to 53%. Of students being at grade level, um, once, once we returned back to campus. Um, we also saw a decrease in our Reds from 18 to 17% and our yellows from 36 to 30. The students who were, um, two or more below were also invited to our middle school program which started today. A special thank you to Dr. Wood and Mr. Osborne for braving the water balloon challenge with me, um, a few weeks ago. Um, so you know, when, when we as an academy ask ourselves, were we successful this year? And I actually say, yes, we were successful this year. Um, our, our efforts as a staff to always put students first. Plus the impact we made from our teachers working tirelessly to support our students. And our support staff actually jumping in to help when our students were in crisis and/or needed someone to talk to. I believe we were successful. Um, we, we reopened, we were students focused, we had in-person productions, which wasn't heard of. We saw a decrease in failing students once we put some supports in place. Um, we developed a credit recovery program very quickly for the first and second semester. We held grade level meetings virtually and in person to begin our PSS journey. And then we ended the year with all staff meetings back to in-person. Um, which actually staff, uh, really appreciated as well. And we started our advisory program in, in preparation for next year. And most importantly, we, we made mental health a priority despite all the continuous changes every day, sometimes on the hours, sometimes on the minutes. Um, so as we, as we look ahead into the Renaissance of next year, we need to. Um, some work that we need to do is we need to build some systems instructionally. And ensure that our tracking of our data and follow-up is cohesive. In order to ensure that our students, um, I'm sorry, that our actual MTSS process. Um, it's in collaboration with Dr. Ellis and our student services team is actually being implemented. With fidelity to the greatest extent possible. We also need to increase our tier one supports with some UDL training and collaboration with Ms. Barial and our teaching and learning team. And, um, an introduction to win time at the secondary level. This is something that I am personally very, very passionate about. Um, as I helped develop a win program at my prior school at the secondary level. So I'm, I'm excited because we have purchased a program that will allow students to receive help, retake exams. Um, um, it will allow our student services team to, to have group sessions, do STL. Sessions with our students, extra office hours, enrichment opportunities as well for our students. Club meetings can be held during this time. Um, and it will, uh, and, and, and most importantly, it's going to provide the support at the tier one. Tier 1.5 and tier two level, um, which, which I think is really important because it's going to hit all of the tiers. Um, with this new program that we have purchased, which is called FlexiSched. Um, and it will also, uh, make it, um, uh, more sustainable for our teachers. So they will be able to build community again with their colleagues as well. Because now their, their, their lunchtime, when they're, when, when they're normally trying to find students. To, for office hours or support them and help them because our teachers are dedicated. Um, they will be able to now do that during that win time, which will be during advisory. So that they can now enjoy their lunch, which means our students can also enjoy. A, their lunch as well without having to find teachers, um, to, to go back into the classroom, finish retaking a test, extra help, extra office hours. So it's really exciting that, um, that, that the entire PFAA staff is excited about. I introduced it a few weeks ago at our, um, PD. And they are excited, they are sending ideas and so it's, it's really rebuilding our community again. Of, of who we are and where we're headed. Um, also, we will be continuing our work with ensuring CPM is being used with fidelity. Um, as I shared earlier and Ms. Barial did, um, having an additional support person. Um, with the math coach is going to be crucial and, and, and helpful. And also we've increased high school PE sections to three, which is exciting. And we reintroduced stretch and strengthening. We will also continue to use our grade level meetings to identify struggling students from our collected data and develop plans. To support them and watch them grow academically. Some preliminary plans are to hire an intervention ELA and math teacher, have a homework room after school. Tier one supports within the classroom through win time and advisory using, um, instructional rounds. Um, where our teachers will be able to, um, go observe each other. Um, learn some, some strategies from each other because as we know, we always learn best by watching each other. And also, um, using, um, targeted intervention through the actual data that we collect from our I-Ready. CASP, IABs, all of that putting together during our MTSS time will be important in, um. In refining the work that we do moving forward. Um, also, um, if B1U is successful this summer, which I think it will be. Um, I am hoping to continue with this in-house mechanism next year and/or fall semester as well. To provide students an, an additional opportunity to continue to be A through G eligible. Um, we are also expanding our dual enrollment, um, thank you to Mr. Dobson for collaborating with PFAA. Um, on this as well, we will be offering English 300 for our seniors, which is exciting. We have 30 students signed up, keep in mind that our class is only a class of 100-ish students for the senior class. So this is exciting, we have a lot of students who want to take this class. Um, I, I've already hosted parent nights, um, about this, all students and parents have already signed a contract. Um, and so we are ready to offer this class, we are ready to rock and roll in the fall. Um, also, um, as I shared earlier, uh, we are hoping to refine our instructional practice next year. To do this, we'll be working in our departmental teams to develop our scope and sequence. Um, and, and making sure that we're aligning, um, horizontally, vertically and also aligning with our arts team. So that, um, we are cohesive and once, one academy. Um, because that's, that's ultimately what's going to help us rebuild our community. Um, similarly, our productions, um, are going to be bigger and better next year. Um, what, because we're going to be focusing on collaborating with, within our different teams. So basically, in a nutshell, we will be working a lot next year. Um, we, we will be developing and implementing our MTSS process. Refining our instructional stance, building our advisory and win time. Conducting, um, some instructional rounds and walkthroughs. We, we will be doing all of this during our minimum days, beginning of the year PD and our late start Wednesdays. Um, all of this in the hopes that we have a successful year again next year. Um, finally, when we think about all the work that we will be doing next year, one thing that comes to mind is MTSS. This, MTSS will be driving all the work that we do next year. Um, so I'm excited that, um, Dr. Ellis and Ms. Barial will be, will be, will be helping PFAA along that journey as well. Um, and, um, I, I thank the board for, for, for trusting me and, and for continuing to, to support. And the, um, other administrators for their trust and, and for, for helping us to, to. To rebuild our community as the Renaissance of PFAA, so. Um, and finally, I thank our PFAA staff for their continued dedication. In supporting our students and persevering through this very challenging year, um, with, with me. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Just, it's not a question, but congratulations, um, Dr. Gandhi for, for. Everything that you've accomplished this year and, you know, coming into it. Um, and having COVID happen right when you're just coming onboard, um, I'm just. Um, I'm just really pleased and, um, you should be really proud of yourself for everything that you've accomplished. Um, can you, can you just explain for a second a little bit the FlexiSched a little bit? I don't understand that.
Yes, so, um, um, every day next, next year, um, if you look at the, the, the bell schedule, um, I, I can talk, uh, more about it, um, uh, next time. But basically, in, in a nutshell, the, the program itself is, um, during advisory, all students will be, um, Mondays will be dedicated for character counts. And then also on Mondays, all students will be picking what classes they want to go to for the rest of the week. So this will provide teachers an opportunity to do retakes. Or, you know, I need to practice my instrument. So on Wednesday, I'm going to go to Mr. Spiva's room to go practice my, my instrument. Or, hey, I need to retake a, a chemistry test. Um, this, this is, um, I'm going to sign up to go retake the, the chemistry test on Thursday because the, the chemistry teacher is offering a, a retake on that particular day. So every single teacher will be providing a class slash workshop, um, every day um, during the actual school week, uh, school week with the exception of Monday. Club meetings can also happen during this time. So if, if, if any of our clubs want to have their meetings during advisory now instead of lunch, um, they will be able to, to do that as well.
That sounds great, thank you.
The other handy piece of FlexiSched that Seem is being very polite about is that, let's say I'm a chemistry teacher and I know that little Joe Wood needs a little extra help with balancing chemical equations, I can pre-select him into my workshop ahead of time, so. Any other questions for Dr. Gandhi?
All right, thanks, Dr. Gandhi. Um, moving on, Dr. Wood, do you have some comments for us?
Just a reminder that next Tuesday night, we have our next board meeting, so, uh, it's at four PM. Uh, that board meeting, we will be approving our budget and approving our LCAP. So, um, we definitely need a quorum, but we, we hope to see everyone there. If for some reason, uh, you have a glitch in your schedule, just let Ziva or me know and, uh, we can plan accordingly.
Great. All right, thank you. Board of Director comments.
Um, okay, go ahead.
No, I was just actually going to recognize, um, our staff and our administration and, and everyone who was involved in the graduation um, at Center Health Park. I think it was very well done, very exciting. Um, needless to say, to have a graduation again in a more traditional format than what we've had last year. Um, and I, I just, I think it was a great, um, exciting thing for the kids to, to participate in, and I know it was for me. Um, so I hope that we can have, um, you know, maybe not Center Health Park in the future, but a little bit bigger venue. Um, and if it's air-conditioning, air-conditioned, all the better. But thank you all for your dedication to getting that done for our students, it was great.
Yeah, I thought it was great, too. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I thought I was muted. Um, yeah, I just, the enthusiasm and energy level, I, I don't know how you guys are doing it. You guys are amazing, and I hope that you have some time to rest and relax and be away from the screen, um, over the summer. And just thank you, can't say thank you enough for everything and for your leadership.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, future board agenda items.
Did I mention we're going to be talking about LCAP and budget on Tuesday night at four PM?
I think you said be there or else.
Be there or be square.
Absolutely. Okay, well, congratulations to everybody for making it through a very unique year. Um, congratulations to all of our graduates. Wishing you all best of luck in your future endeavors. And, uh, with that, I think we can adjourn the meeting if no one else, um, has any issues with that.
Sounds good, we'll adjourn officially eight twenty-four PM.
All right, thanks, everybody, see you next week.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Bye. Bye.